This is the March 2nd, 2021, special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Can everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ma'am Clerk, can we please have a report out from the last closed session?
From closed session on February 26, 2021, report, such or item number one, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, board action, no reportable action.
Thank you, ma'am Clerk. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda, administrative office, discuss remaining requested adjustments to the four-year 2020-21 mid-year budget and provide direction to staff regarding any modifications thereto. Two, approve the mid-year budget adjustments included in attachments A and B. Three, approve the mid-year capital assets list included as attachment C. Four, approve the mid-year budget adjustments included in D. Five, ratify the mid-year budget adjustments included in attachment E, which were approved by the Board at the February 23 meeting, requires four-fifth affirmative vote of the Board. Ms. Vala.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Krista von Lada, my administrative office, bringing you the second part of the mid-year budget discussion for this fiscal year. If the Board will allow me, I would like to just briefly go over the attachments and talk about the structure of this presentation, and then we can discuss any adjustments that the Board may or may not want to approve or make. So, starting with actually attachment E, this item is, and it's been carefully gone through to only show and highlight the modifications to the budget that were in fact approved by your Board on February 23. So, to the extent that any of these budget units had items that were not specifically highlighted in the memo under attachment A, items 1 through 13, save for 10, which was the dispatch request, to the extent that anything wasn't discussed in the memo itself, then they remain to be on either attachment, most likely on attachment A for the Board's discussion today. So, what was approved, in a nutshell, were all of the requests for additional general fund appropriations for the departments. It was, in fact, the request for additional appropriations that gave rise to the textual description that was included for each of those items in the memo. Revenue-neutral requests for those same departments were not discussed, and for that reason, they remain on attachment A or B. So, moving then to attachment A, which, let me just share my screen here. So, these, for example, are the additional, or were the adjustments that were approved by the Board at the February 23 meeting, and totaled just a little bit over $300,000 of general fund contribution was authorized by your Board on that date. So, what remains for general fund revenue-neutral requests, and this is where we have the TOT discussion, that was, we'll get to here in a moment, but the lion's share of these requests, for example, are like the elections budget, which is requesting $25,000 be added to their state aid revenue, which is then intended to be used for a server in capital equipment. So, that's one of the items that's included on the capital asset list. They need to do that due to an actual change in the law that requires their office to upgrade this equipment. So, they also are budgeting $10,000 in salary savings because where they realized they needed that $10,000 is in the clerk budget, so that's a direct offset. So, if we were to go down most of these revenues, then what we would see are all of those offsets. Before we get to the TOT discussion, I would like to highlight that the Jeep 4x4 has, request from the building department, has been removed. In addition, there has been an addition made for the assessor's office, which is a request for a megabyte server upgrade that has been recommended by IT as an urgent addition, or an urgent need for that office, and that would be paid for by salary savings, so again, revenue neutral. But I think the main issue here, and just to clarify if my presentation was not sufficiently clear when we last spoke, that the TOT is already over budget for the full annual budget. And when we look at the $983,488 projected revenue increase, that number was arrived at by myself and the auditor controller, working through three different sets of projections and ultimately settling on this one, which I, for lack of a better term, would say is middle-of-the-road reasonable projection. However, we certainly do not have to budget that revenue. The way that it manifests in the budget is that we would, if that revenue were budgeted, then there could be a $245,872 contribution to the Visitors Bureau, the county fire departments, and the Sheriff's Department. As some of you may have noted, there is not a budgeted transfer out to Rhodes, and that's because the Rhodes MOE is substantially more than what was originally budgeted for TOT, for that department, to begin with. And so, since the idea of the TOT contribution to Rhodes is to offset that MOE, and the general fund has already backstopped upwards of $400,000 in order to meet that MOE, we would still be well within where the TOT would simply be offsetting the general fund for contributions that are already included in the budget. So, with that said, if your Board would like, I can continue to move through with the spreadsheets, or if the Board would like to have a specific conversation about the TOT now, we could do that. Okay, so I will then continue to move through the spreadsheets.
Mr. Taufanelli.
I do have a question, Krista.
Yes.
Under request number eight.
Yes.
Object code 4072.
Yes.
All the way to the right, it says increase in TOT projection, and then it says will be partially offset by county contributions. What does that statement mean?
What that means is then if we move, if we look down to request 13, so what this reflects is the $983,000 revenue, projected revenue increase that would flow into the general revenues budget, and then the county contributions, these are the decreases to the offset essentially that then would flow out to the Sheriff's Department, county fire departments, and the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. So, that's where the delta of the $245,000 and change would then be swept to the county general fund, which as a practical matter, if we, if the Board so directs and we remove all of the projected TOT transfers, increase in budget and whatnot, what will happen as a practical matter at the end of the fiscal year is that those revenues will then in fact sweep to the general fund, to the extent that they're realized.
Okay. Hang on one second. Okay, 245,872 times three is 737,616, not 983,466. So, how did we come up with 245,872? Where'd that number come from?
It should be the 983,488 divided by four, and the reason why that additional $245,000 isn't shown here is because that's the general fund sweep, because to pay back the general fund for the MOE for the Rhodes Fund. The MOE that the general fund paid is budgeted to pay for Rhodes is over $400,000, so...
Okay, all right, but that's, I think, it's not clear, but with an explanation from you somewhat, it is clear, but looking at this, it's not clear. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did any other Board members want to discuss anything about the TOT now, or shall we let her present the entire thing and then we can deliberate on it in its entirety when it comes to the mid-year budget? I think we'll move on. Go ahead and move on, Ms. Lada.
I will.
Von Lada.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Okay, so moving to attachment B, these are non-general fund budget units, so many of them are special revenue fund budget units. So, we see things here like...
Attachment.
Attachment B, yes. On my spreadsheet here, it's the non-general fund attachment. Sorry that the actual number's not highlighted, or the title is not highlighted. So, going through cannabis regulatory fees, for example, this is just to budget the remainder of the fiscal year 2019-2020 revenue that had not been previously repaid to the general fund, and that will, the recommendation is strictly to increase contingencies there. Environmental health is, experienced some necessities, rather, and they're budget units that they're asking to offset with their own contingencies in certain of these funds. In addition, let's see if there's anything. Health and Human Services is making a fair amount of cleanup. Here's where we see substantial increases in realignment backfill for Cal Works, so three-quarters of a million dollars that is then, they're asking to instead rebudget in their current fiscal year budget. The behavioral health, mental health increase in revenue backfill, again, they're budgeting only fraction of it here, and the rest, they would like to increase their contingencies in their special revenue fund that is attached to that budget, operating budget unit, and so forth. Public Works has had substantial, has experienced a lot of projects getting them done that has necessitated certain adjustments in their revenue. Some revenues of theirs are in fact decreasing. That said, they have done a lot of work on the Butte Road Recovery Projects and are asking for an additional $2.1 million from the PG&E Special Revenue Fund in order to offset those increases, as well as a million dollars from their own special revenue fund for other SB1 projects that aren't moving along at a faster-than-anticipated rate. Then here we see corresponding adjustments on the Butte Fire Settlement Special Revenue Fund, and then here where we look at the benefit basins and the countywide REM fee, as well as the million dollars in the Butte Fire Settlement Fund, all of which were budgeted for the $2.6 million fire JPA loan, we're backing those out and just undoing those budgeted transfers here. And that is more or less the material items on the sheet. Although we can certainly discuss any of them, this increase in Prop 172 needs to happen so that we have the budgetary authority to increase the operating transfer out into the Sheriff's Department. That money has already been budgeted from general funds and will sweep into the general fund. Narcotics budget unit here, this is the only exception other than the TOT on attachment A, that is a sheriff request that isn't otherwise included on attachment B, I mean, D, Lake Dog, I apologize, and this is revenue-neutral inside of their special revenue fund requests for, for example, SCBA's. There is a '98 Chevy one-ton truck with SCBA tanks from San Andreas Fire that they would like to procure.
One moment, Mr. Garamendi.
Quick question, Krista.
Yes.
On, since we're on B, right, page 5, 6, or 6, 6 now, I've seen on item number 31, object code 5730, the Prop 7, the projected Prop 172 to the sheriff, that number matches over on attachment A.
Yes.
Under fund 4720.
Yep.
0320, could you just unpack that for me?
Sure.
I'm seeing them two different.
Yeah, it's a weird thing. So, those funds flow into a special revenue fund, but then I believe it's by statute that the funds need to be spent in a fashion that's consistent with it, and so what that means for us as a budgetary matter is that when they come in, they're put in the special revenue fund and segregated, but then they get transferred into the Sheriff's Department budget, and that's where they will remain. In this case, we had held the Sheriff's Department harmless at final budget from their decreases in revenue, so that is true both with respect to TOT and Prop 172. So, they did not realize any revenue reductions as a practical matter, which is why on attachment A, we're not budgeting any offsetting expenditures.
Okay, so that's the credit, there's the debit over there.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so moving forward, the capital assets have been adjusted somewhat. As I mentioned, the request from the building department has been removed. We did in fact add the request from the assessor's office for the megabyte server upgrade that would be offset by salary savings from the general fund. We did add one Ford F-250 crew cab, that was one of two requests for trucks that had been submitted to the administrative office that we discussed on the 23rd. One, their request to have general fund dollars appropriated for one of those vehicles, they've decided to hold off until the department requested, CAO recommended budget discussions that we'll see in the spring, and have instead requested that only, to move forward with the purchase from AB443, non-general fund dollars, to procure one of those two vehicles. In addition, we have added the $82,000 request for a Ford Utility Interceptor. This will be substantially offset by insurance revenue when, to the general fund, when those funds are received. There is some urgency here because of the nature of the vehicle and the fact that it's not being produced anymore. There happens to be one, so the Sheriff's Department is recommending that the Board authorize this to that end now. Otherwise, I think the flatbed truck was previously approved, the SCBA's were also here before, we discussed the one-ton truck, the Ford interceptors, there are two of which these are being paid for by the Sheriff's Department, special revenue funds, and those were here previously, as well as the Rapid ID equipment and software project for background checks related to cannabis, and then we've got the copier scanner for the building department and the election server that we discussed earlier. Which brings us to the request by the Sheriff's Department, but the spreadsheet has been revised substantially to include, other than the two things on attachment A and B that we've already discussed, these are the Sheriff's Department requests, and they've been separated into three categories. So, the first category being the revenue-neutral adjustments, the second category being requests for which additional general funds are being sought, and the third category are requests tied to the JBCT funding that is anticipated to flow from the contracts that your Board approved on February 23. And with that, I would like to take this opportunity to mention that, so the general overview of what has transpired since we last met is that the administrative office and the Sheriff's Department got together and had what I will couch as a very constructive meeting. The request by the Sheriff's Department did change somewhat during the course of that meeting and prior, so they've taken certain requests off the table and would like instead to have those conversations in connection with budget development for next fiscal year. So, examples are that, as well as making some other suggestions. So, for example, the F-250 that we had discussed, they have removed that request until recommended budget. They have agreed to recommend that certain funding be set aside inside the jail budget to increase the county's, the facility's maintenance a bit, and to continue to have that conversation as we go through budget development. Have agreed to offset in future budgets, were the Board to approve the services tech for the Sheriff's, for the Sheriff's Department, to then reduce by the $64,000 their extra higher funding, so that the net offset going forward will be that $17,000 plus whatever related typical MOU and other salary increases would be. And also then to, they have in fact gone back and taken a hard look at the Cal EMA budget that was discussed and the related special revenue fund, and have agreed to begin to fund a deputy out of that department, or out of that fund, rather, so that will be a net general fund offset that, well, it's not included in these adjustments that are before you now, but we can expect to see at recommended budget. And as a practical matter, they will bill some time to that budget unit for the remainder of this fiscal year, and that will operate as a credit to the general fund.
Sorry, Krista.
Sure.
Krista, why is it when we look at the Sheriff's Request Attachment D, the third column adds up to 6830, but it isn't, don't we have debits and credits that add up to 175? So, might just be somewhere in the spreadsheet telling the answer.
So, the 6830 is the 51,300 additional general fund contribution that is being requested for the dispatch budget, as well as the $17,000 that is being requested for the Sheriff's Services Tech. That's the position I was just discussing, that in future budgets, there will be a reduction made to the extra higher, so that 60, of that 63,000, the delta after the 17 will actually be covered already in that budget unit. And then there is actually, those are the two things. That's...
That's fine.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, the JBCT funding is being requested for this fiscal year at 312,500. The way this budget unit, or this funding stream will work is that in this first year, this 32,000, or 30,000 and change is for startup costs. Additionally, 157,000 budgeted, and this is for CFNG, otherwise known as WellPath, and the professional services that they'll be providing so that we can meet our obligations under the contract. They're requesting the two correctional officers, as well as a correctional tech, and you can see if I scroll over here what the fully burdened costs are for these positions. So, it's actually $80,000 apiece, so it'd be 160,800 for the two correctional techs on an annual basis, 53,000 for, oh, sorry, these are confused, 53,000 for the tech and then 80,400 for each of the correctional officers, and then this is actually a special department expense that will be reimbursed to CFNG for their share of the startup costs. And then down under patrol, this is where we see the request for the captain position, which would be fully burdened at approximately $258,000 going forward, where the Board to approve that. In terms of the revenue-neutral requests, going back to the top, these are items that the Sheriff's Department, for example, has agreed to move certain funding from their professional and specialized services into capital in order to get the Rapid ID equipment. Again, this is for two vehicles between the Sheriff's SLESF and AB443 budget units where they are actually reimbursing, or they're replacing two vehicles that have been wrecked but were paid for with non-general funds, and those revenues will go back into their special revenue funds when the payouts come from the insurance company. This is a request for the jail where this funding is separate and distinct from the JBCT income. This is revenue that has increased due to the fact that we have been continuing to house inmates that would otherwise be diverted to the state, and for that, this revenue stream has increased. So, the Sheriff's Office has agreed to increase the county facilities maintenance budget here by approximately $66,000, as well as cover the cost of the maintenance agreement with Justice Systems for the jail cameras, and then obtain some SCBA's with that funding. So, that is all revenue-neutral. The patrol is simply the budgeting of the revenue for the F-250, and then the corresponding reduction in the fund balance and that special revenue fund. And then we've discussed, I think, at this point, pretty well, the request for additional general funds, but this is for the two, this is for the tech position and dispatch, and then the 51,300 that would cover several, several things that the Sheriff's, or the dispatch budget needs, I believe, in order to get to the end of the fiscal year in that budget unit. And then the cybers... And then the cyber system, and additionally, the $82,000. So those requests are for additional general funds.
On this, just going down, you know, we have increased, decreased appropriation, increased, decreased revenue. And then, now, we're talking about revenue or expenditure, expenditures that are neutral because, you know, they're being offset by other, other monies. So, when we go to the increase and decrease on contingencies with the fund balance, the bottom line says 68,300. So this total request, all put together, is a negative to our contingencies fund at 68,000, 68,300 after everything pencils out?
No, I just, I actually just caught a mistake right there. No, you're right. You're absolutely right. It's 175,300.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to be, just want to be clear on that, 175,300. It wasn't penciling out for me, so.
No, no, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was that number, 175, 300?
And the shift of forensics that were discussed on the 23rd, the Sheriff's Department has agreed to table that discussion until we get to budget development for next fiscal year.
Are we, do you want to move on to attachment E? Or are we done with E?
We're done with E.
My apologies, Ms. Clerk. All of my microphone turned off.
So at this point, anything the Board would like to discuss, any questions that I can answer? I believe the TOT discussion and the Sheriff's Department items are the primary issues that I'm aware of that should be discussed. I did want to note one thing, just by way of follow-up, from the meeting that we had on the 23rd, which is with respect to certain of the Butte Fire revenues that are included in our budget. We have been tentatively, I suppose is the best way to put it, advised by CAL-OS that certain of those funds will not be received until likely next fiscal year. That's about $340,000 worth. Then, on top of that, there is about a half a million that we just over, that is currently in the budget, that we do not expect to receive. However, these budget adjustments weren't brought to your Board, although they were discussed in my presentation on the 23rd, they weren't brought as adjustments. So far as I have been made aware, we still have not received anything definitive from CAL-OS or FEMA regarding these revenues. What they were, though, was accounted for in the fund balance projection, as were the countywide RIM loans that were expecting to hit the general fund. And we are working actively with the Auditor's Office, the OES, Public Works, and CAL-OS in order to, at least in the case of the Butte recovery, to continue to hone in on what those, what those items are going to look like. But I do reiterate that they were all taken into account when the general fund balance projection was made.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Krista, I do have a question on this mistake on the bottom line down on attachment D. On your narrative that you gave us under financing, you say the overall net increase to general fund contingencies, fund balance will be 1,033,121. Is that now, do we need to subtract the 170, or whatever the difference is?
I could change that right, if you'll just give me one moment, I'll fix that. So 175, 300. That calculation is here, and it would be negative 175, 300. So just under a million. And if we remove the TOT.
What's the figure?
977,421, but that's assuming that we budget the projected increase in TOT.
If we, yeah, that, well, that's what this was projecting, if we did that.
Right.
So, the other question, I'm not clear on what you were saying about this $800, 800, I wish it was only 800, $800,000 deficit that we could be expecting to see through reimbursements from CAL-OS or FEMA. That money has been budgeted in our current budget that we adopted.
Correct.
So, those monies can and will be spent regardless if we have that income or not. And so at the end of the year, if they are spent and we don't realize it, and I assume that $800,000 is spread out, it's not just in one department, that unless there's any savings from those departments that totally $800,000, we will have to be dipping into contingencies to make the books whole at the end of the year if we don't experience or bring in that $800,000. Is that not correct?
So, that, I mean, when we talk about the projected fund balance, we are taking that into consideration. Yes, there is $800,000 that's in the budget as revenue, just like there are other funds, for example, the TOT that are over budget. This is an area where we're under budget. And so, we are not projecting to have to decrease, to make any of the teeter transfer in order to close out the year. I do believe that, and one way to look at it is exactly what you're saying. It's a different way of saying the same thing as what I've been, tried to explain, which is that when we project a $2 to $3 million fund balance at the end of the year, one of the things that's included in that is the $4 million that we have sitting in our contingencies right now. So, another way of saying that is that we would lose $1 million, $1 million of that fund balance. Yes, so yes.
So, if we were to pencil out right now, you know, saying that that's monies that won't be realized this fiscal year, I mean, in my mind, if I'm doing my budget at home, I could go to that 970, what is that now?
973.
973?
977, but yeah.
977?
Sure.
I could go ahead and subtract 800 and officially say that, you know.
Right.
Based on the talks with CAL-OS so far.
Right.
There is the possibility that these funds won't be realized. And I think it's been the direction of the Board in the past, unless funds are realized with that, when it comes to emergency funds, that we aren't going to, we aren't going to, we aren't going to encumber those or put them into our budgets until they're realized in the future, because it takes, it takes time.
That is certainly my recommendation.
Right. So at this time, you know, that 977 would be 177,000.
Yes.
And, but we still have the TOT money, I don't want to say it.
I mean, not really. I mean, but what you're saying is correct. So, I mean, if we were to go in and strip out, which, given that we don't have any written documentation that is specific enough for us to, to know what numbers we would plug in or just strip them completely, but if we were, then yes, the net increase theoretically, if everything goes according to plan, would be on the order of just under $200,000 if we were to rebudget the TOT, or not, depending on how you want to look at it. I reiterate that these issues were taken in consideration when making the fund balance projection that I hope was low.
I think, I think that all in all, looking at 177, we're in, at mid-year, over budget as of December 31st, as at 177. This isn't a negative thing in my mind. I think, I think it's a positive thing in the fact that we did budget conservatively. This number's going more towards neutral, but at the same time, we aren't going, we aren't regressing or going into the negative. So I, I just want to say that, you know. And then we'll have to keep that in mind as we go into the next fiscal year.
Yes, and I.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I think the, the reality that despite the fact that efforts were made in order to make sure that this revenue was being budgeted correctly, I think this experience will certainly cause me to be even less, more conservative in terms of budgeting any disaster funds at this point. I think this certainly from Butte, with the exception of the 344,000 that it sounds like we might get next year, that'll be all the revenues that we would recommend potentially budgeting, barring some other new information that I don't have at this point, certainly.
Ms. Cowley, you've been waiting patiently.
Didn't the auditor talk to us about possibly, or John Osborne, I can't remember, this FEMA may be questioning or disallowing some expenses, and we put money aside for that? I mean, I'm working, lacking, it was about a million. And I think it was out of the Butte Fire.
Yes, and in the incident, yes, we did set $1 million aside.
I would like to, on attachment A, page one of two, on number eight, I would like to request that instead of sweeping the 20,450 from Community TV, that we keep 12,000 of it in their account. They have been wanting for quite some time to change their light panels out, the LED, to LEDs, because the ones they have really aren't safe, and they've been wanting to replace them. And the bulbs are changed frequently on the current ones. So, if possible, to take 12,000 from the 20,450 and move that into, I don't know, is it capital assets, would it be?
We would move that, we would move.
If it's approved by the Board.
Yeah, we would move that into capital assets and reduce this transfer, this transfer here. And this attachment B, then we would reduce this and add, add, add the capital for 12,000.
Yeah, if the Board's so inclined. Mr. Lark, I know, has been talking about this for some time.
Would that 12,000 dollar transfer, our bottom line of 177,000 would go to approximately 165,000 at that time, if the Board so chooses to do that transfer, correct?
That's correct.
Just trying to keep the bottom line clear.
And then I have some questions for the Sheriff when you get to that point.
I think, I think we'll go through the Board and ask if they're in favor of doing this capital asset for PAT TV to start. Mr. Toffenelli, are you in favor of that?
Sure.
Mr. Garamidi?
No.
Ms. Polendor?
No.
I am in favor of making that, that asset, so that's, that's affirmative on that 12,000. At the very end, yes, at this point, just, I'm hearing you, Mr. Garamidi. At this point, I'm just trying to navigate the meeting. Ms. Cowley?
Just questions for the Sheriff, that's all.
I'll give everyone a opportunity to move forward on anything else, and then we'll, we'll get, get to the Sheriff all at once. Is there anything else anybody would like to bring up? Mr. Garamidi?
I would propose that we, that we do not, we do not move forward with the TOT as projected and spent.
In its entirety, sir?
In its entirety.
So you're talking the 3245s, 872, the other one paid back to general fund for the Public Works thing, so you're excluding that, that part?
Well, let's, I would, but I don't think I'm going to get there, so I would certainly exclude 245,000 to the Visitors Bureau and to fire at the time, certainly with the Sheriff and the MOE. We could work that all out, it's all in-house, so if things change or it doesn't get spent, it can be swept. But once we, once we hand out that additional almost $500,000, we're not going to see that again. That's just going to be gone.
So what, if I can make it clear, you're talking about the 245, 872 to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, the other two are within-house, so you're in favor of those?
There's two of them, there's that, there's the, there's the, there's the Visitors Bureau and there's the fire.
So you want to sweep the fire money?
I think we ought to talk about it. I think, I think, I think my concern is primarily that we are projecting TOT, and yes, we're above where we thought we were going to be. We're still making a pretty big projection, and if anybody's got a crystal ball and can tell me what's going to happen in the future, I'd be very interested.
At this time, this isn't a projection, these are the actual numbers that we receive. Or is it a projection through the end of the year?
It's a projection.
A projection through the end of the year. That, that makes very much sense. Until that money's realized, Mr. Garamidi, I personally, you know, to a certain degree, agree with you. Some of it is realized at this point. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
None, none.
Mr. Toffenelli, would you like to get into this conversation at this time?
Yeah, Marita can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember ever redistributing TOT at mid-year. We, we just give it out of what our projections are at preliminary budget and final budget, and we go through the year. This is the first time I've ever presented at mid-year redistributing any forecasted TOT funds. So generally, what happens is if there's a carryover, we may use some of that carryover funds going into the next year and distribute it on our next preliminary budget or final budget. So again, this is a very, very strong, they're projecting 983,488 increase to the TOT when what was presented to us last week, or the week before, on February 23rd, we were only at 881. So they're forecasting even more than what we experienced at mid-year. And we've already gone through July, August, September, and October of this year, which is tour season, more or less. So I would, I would agree with Jack that we shouldn't even be distributing any of it at this point.
I would ask one question. What is, what is the actual realized amount as of December 31st? 881, I just want to make, be clear on that, yeah. Is that correct?
No, I would want to actually go back and double-check the financial system, but, which unfortunately I don't have access to in chambers. Let me just.
Maybe Barbara could-
I do believe that's correct.
We could go, keep going, and maybe Barbara would have it.
Eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, look, eight hundred, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. It is realized, is the realized amount. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I am hearing what Mr. Garamindie's saying, and I agree with him for 90% of it. I do think that we need to pay back the money into our general fund, but at the same time, if we don't do any of those appropriations, right now it's all going back into the general fund to wait for fiscal budget. Um, Mr., I, I'm in agreement with this also. Um, you know, other than, will this have any effect on the sheriff's budget as presented right now, is my other question to, to that point?
Yeah, that is the number on the TOT as of 1231.
Mr. Fuldorff?
Sorry, Mr.- Sorry, just-
Go ahead.
But the 881 is, what did we budget last year? We did, what, it was 744,000, so 800, so we've really only got a net increase of, of that, of that little bit, right?
Well, as of-
So, it's not 881,000 more than what we budgeted.
We are aiming to about 120,000 and go over, but, but, right.
For the year, yeah.
As of, as of December 31st.
Right.
Right. And that's realized, so that's the only number I'm sticking to right now.
And so, as far as the question goes, on the sheriff's budget, it has no impact. That's why it was, if we go back here, there are, it remains to be the request on this first sheet, and there are no associated, there are no associated expenses with it. So, it, it's, whatever's realized for TOT will sweep to the, will, or be available to be rebudgeted and at whatnot, regardless of what we do here today. So, we can certainly make, we can remove 100% of the TOT transfers that are reflected here, or half of them as the board directs.
Uh, Ms. Callaway, you in favor of sweeping the entire TOT to the general fund until, until the next fiscal year? Mr. Toffenelli? Mr. Garamindie?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Fuldorff, there, there we go.
All right, so just, so I'm clear, 100% of the TOT, as I'm going to unwind. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
What does that do to our bottom line?
Nothing.
Not, not mu, not much, because the 120,000's the difference right now, but it does do a little bit to the bottom line.
As a practical matter, it's going to be what it's going to be on June 30th.
Understood.
Or as of, yeah.
Um, if they're, Mr. Garamindie, you happy with that? Uh, with, with, with that, is there anything else before we get to the sheriff's budget? At this point, we'll move on to the sheriff's budget, and I'll entertain any comments, questions? Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, um, I'm going to attachment D, and the request for additional general fund dollars. Item's 23, which is 5,400, salary increase of 17,000, and salary increase of 51,300. You spoke about, and maybe Rick can speak to this, on the fund that I brought up last time, the Cal, uh, Cal EMA funding, there was 127,000 in that fund, and the sheriff has said, what you have said earlier, that they will take that money and fund a deputy for the remainder of the year with some of that funding?
Correct.
Um, do we have a number, what number that is to fund for the remainder of the year, that deputy? How much of those funds will we be using?
What's the, what's the cost of that deputy for the rest of the year?
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure. Under Sheriff Macedo, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
The total fiscal year cost is 87,000. Uh, that's for next fiscal year. We will start billing back this year at the next pay period. Um, it'll be the same employee that's assigned, but I don't have a calculation for you what it will be for the remainder of, of the year. I think we're somewhere around-
Thirty.
Oscar could speak probably to the number of pay periods, or perhaps Krista, but it won't be a significant amount this year, I think, next year is where you-
Just under 30,000 dollars if you do the math.
And then the proposal for the rest of that money, because that's going to be nearly 100,000 dollars left, what was the proposal for that remaining?
You talking about the amount remaining in the, in the fund?
Yes.
Well, we'll start bill, we'll be billing against it each and every year. There'll be no general fund contribution, so we will start eating, eating towards that fund, and then we will, at budget development next year, decide what we are going to do with that funding.
Okay, so if we're going to backfill, there'll be a 30,000, just under 30,000 salary saving to the general fund.
Next, next year, no, it'll be significantly more, though, this year?
Yes, this year.
Approximately.
Yeah.
Approximately that amount. Is, is there any reason we can't take that and spend 17,000 for this one request for the tech position?
That would be outside the scope of that position. Uh, I mean, we, I, I'd hate to do that because that 17,000 is for a sheriff's services technician, and as you recall, when, when Ms. Von Latta was presenting that to the board, there's going to be an offset and a reduction of the extra hires for the following year. So, we're reducing the extra hire budget to account for that increase for the 17,000.
And to answer your question directly, we can't use that CalAma money to fund any SST.
Okay. All right, thank you. In, in our discussions prior to the meeting, I, I believe you're willing to sweep those salary savings towards the jail fund, is what you had said, Mr. DeVisley, or is, I mean, not the jail fund, but the maintenance, maintenance issues, or what, what were you conceding?
Oh, sorry, what were the, the concessions that we-
Well, that was, we're, when we put the person into CalAma, we're going to start using some of those monies to put back into the general fund for the jail, um, maintenance program.
Maintenance program.
That's, that's what we said.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, excellent, thank you.
Here I am, saving you money yet again.
Well, it's, it's an issue we all need to deal with together, so we appreciate you working with us on that one.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Mr. Toffenelli? Ms. Callaway, once again, you've been waiting patiently.
Sheriff, why are you buying a vehicle that's no longer produced? Because in five years, you'll come back and want money, because you can't, for another truck, because you can't get parts for a truck you bought that's no longer produced.
I would love to buy a truck, um, just because that's the way we're going. The problem is, is that when we set this, when we did this, it had to be a like-for-like vehicle, and there, these vehicles are still available, we still can buy parts for them, they're just not producing them anymore. And, and I'm going to blame the CHP for that, because they were the bigger contract for this, and they've gone away from them, they've gone to the Dodge Challenger, or the Dodge Charger. But we could still get parts for the vehicle, that's, that's not going to be an issue. And in five years, that vehicle will be wore out, it'll be time to buy a new truck. But I would love to upgrade it to a truck if you'd allow me.
All right, no.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Uh, just, just one point of clarification. So, since this is a insurance reimbursement, we have to reimburse it with a like vehicle.
Yeah.
If we reimburse this with a more expensive vehicle or a different vehicle, it raises red flags with the, uh, the insurance reimbursement process. We, we've been down this path before, and it caused both our office and HR a significant amount of problems.
Um, under sheriff, if we don't receive the total insurance settlement, the current budget will be able to absorb the difference?
Uh, yes, but I, I wanted, I had a brief phone conversation at the beginning of the board meeting with the HR director about this specific vehicle, and in the past, and I, I can only speak to the past, the sheriff's office has received subrogation to the extent for the time with which we were without that vehicle when another party was found at fault. So, in addition to the full reimbursement, we were also reimbursed for the time that, with, which we were without that vehicle. However, uh, there, there is a, an unanswered question as to the extent of how much the insurance company is going to take for facilitating the process of getting us reimbursed for this vehicle, and how that's going to compare to any subrogation we get. But nevertheless, it's our intent, if, if this is approved by the board today, whatever funds we get, uh, you know, including the subrogation, will be reimbursed to the general fund. And I think the timing of this, why we're pushing this, is if we don't get this vehicle and we're forced to get a different type of vehicle, it's again going to raise flags with, uh, the other insurance company, and why are we getting a separate vehicle when we crash, why are we getting vehicle B when we crash vehicle A? And we'd really just like to avoid all that headache and red tape, uh, and since they're no longer making this vehicle, that's why we're pushing this one in particular.
Is this a new vehicle?
Yeah.
It was a 2016 vehicle that was crashed, but yes, we're, we're getting a, a new vehicle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chet.
Ms. Fuldorff, do you have anything for the sheriff? Mr. Garamindie? Um, I have a couple things. Uh, you know, we're discussing the, these capital asset acquisitions. In the past, this has been consistently an issue, not by any fault of the sheriff's office, but, you know, being able to facilitate this in a timely manner, and it's come back to us year after year since I've been here when it comes to the final budget. If we do decide as a board to approve these as recommended today, um, you know, we authorize this, we would, I would like to let the auditor controller know that to release a PO as quickly as possible legitimately, so that these acquisitions can be made in a timely manner, so we aren't going through the same ordeal that we went through, through in the past. Also, if these are not, uh, done within the, within this fiscal year, that moving into the next fiscal year, I'm looking for the right number, or the right word, Mr. Macedo, you brought it up to me earlier, encumber into the next fiscal budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The, the, the recommendation to encumber these, uh, as we're putting forward today into the next fiscal budget, has to be done, so that we aren't going through the same ordeal trying to acquire these capital assets where we're having to bring it back before the board, re-asking for something that we've already put dollars towards in the past. Do, do, are, do we have an understanding?
If, if I may, um, so in terms of the first part of your statement, Chair, Chair Stopper, so we will work with the sheriff's department and the auditor's office to get those POs cut as quickly as possible. Um, I don't know whether the auditor controller is on the line, as I would defer to her to speak specifically regarding the rules of when something can be encumbered and when it can't. To the extent that there is flexibility there, then we will work with the auditor controller's office to make sure that those funds get encumbered, but this is part of a larger ongoing discussion, and it's one of the arguments against initiating capital purchases at certain times of the year. That said, if you wait and it's a capital asset that needs to be procured, then that comes with other negative side effects. So, um, uh, since I haven't heard auditor controller Gomes jump in, I will say that just generally, that's a conversation we'll need to work with the, the auditor's office on to get, whatever we can get encumbered, encumbered.
And let me jump in and reiterate that these are two-
She is, okay.
These are two vehicles that are sitting on the lots that we've already-
Right.
-placed a hold on, so the purchasing of the vehicles and the outfitting of these vehicles, in my estimate, should be done before the end of this fiscal year, so it should not be an issue, as long as we can jump on them. Again, these vehicles are sitting on the lots, waiting for us, we've already put a hold on them, knowing that we would be able to purchase these, or hoping that you folks would have-
Understood. I'm just putting a priority on getting those POs out-
Yeah.
-in a, in a timely manner, so that you can make that happen, sir. Um, Ms. Gomes, you had your hand up, can you please, uh, interject in here?
Yes, our office will work with admin. It's, it's a complicated system that we have, and it, um, essentially, the admin office sends over the POs, and we enter the encumbrance. One of the complications, which Krista mentioned, is when these occur near the end of the year, and I think what happened last year is there was not enough coordination between our office, admin, and the sheriff's department in terms of what needed to be rolled over budget-wise, and what needed to have an encumbrance at the end of the year. So, I will work specifically with Oscar to make sure that if budget specifically is not rolled over in preliminary budget, that we do have the encumbrances in place, and those will roll forward.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Gomes, I really appreciate you working in that direction.
You're welcome.
I think that'll solve many of our issues in the future. Um, so I'll put the, uh, question forward. Are we in favor of the sheriff's budget as presented? Ms. Callaway?
Yeah.
That's a yes from Ms. Callaway. Mr. Toffenelli? Yes. Mr. Garamindie?
Referring to the catch, you correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fuldorff?
I'm a yes. So, this basically ties up everything. Have you been taking notes the whole time, Ms. Von Latta? I've taken some, um, but, uh, with, yes, ma'am.
Uh, just to revisit PATV.
PATV.
Yeah, I'm thinking, right? Group, D stop.
Chair Stopper, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I just want clarification, that I can go ahead with the captain's position, because I need to get HR to put the packet together, to put it out for promotion, and this is a position that we would not be starting. The, the JBTIC program will start April 1, but I'm not planning on starting this captain's position until probably the first pay period in May. So, give us a little bit of a cushion, but I still need to get HR to get the authority to put the captain's test out there.
I, I think, I think we'll know when we vote at the end of the meeting if we have enough supervisors to support everything we're putting forward, sir.
Okay.
I would say, I would say potentially, right now, everyone was in favor of everything you'd put forward in that fashion.
Okay.
But until we have the final vote-
And, and that's fine, I just want to make sure that you folks were kind of on board with the timeline that I was looking at.
That, that timeline may first actually sounds better than what I had in my head, personally.
Okay.
I thought you were going to start it earlier than that, so.
No, thank you.
Ms. Von Latta?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Garamindie, you brought up some-
I'm just making sure we-
We're, we're done with D? I would, I would suggest that if you have any more questions on anything, or if anybody would like to bring anything else up, you did bring up that the PATV thing is another thing we need to finish having a discussion about. Ms. Callaway, you have your light on.
Um, the funds are already in the PA, the PATV budget. It's just that it appears they have more than what they had, were using, and so we've chosen admin to move it, to move 20,000 out. I'm saying, if it was in their budget, let them purchase what they've wanted to for some time, uh, to replace the system that we're spending time and money on changing what's existing and isn't- on changing what's existing and isn't really safe. And then go back and move the balance out of their budget. So...
Partially, it was an early sweep, as I saw it, for the bottom line.
It was an early sweep.
And I personally am in favor of that $12,000 not being swept. The other 8,000?
Can be swept.
Can be swept?
Can be swept. Or we don't sweep any of it, and whatever's left at the end of the year, like all other departments, we then sweep.
And I'm hearing your point. You know, overall, we just make, we're looking at more expenditures to the general fund, partially from the sheriff's department and some other areas. We already took care of a lion's share of the things with the TOT for now. You know, I can go either way on the 8,000. If it brings in four votes to approve the PATV thing, I'm willing to forego the 8,000 and just for the 12 and change whatever that number is. Let's make it 13 so that the change is covered. Yeah. Can we get eye-in from either of the other two supervisors that weren't in favor before on this, our public access TV? Mr. Garimendi? We gave you TOT.
I would have a vote to approve all of attachment A, with the exception of that 12,000. That's not beyond my vote.
Okay. Ms. Fuldorff?
And just for the sake of clarification, excluding what's reflected on attachment A for TOT and the reduction of that $12,000 to remain in PATV.
All right. Ms. Fuldorff? I'm sorry, Mr. Toffenelli, go ahead. I don't, we already got a fourth right now, so we don't have to answer.
Well, you do, but I do have some questions because PEG TV is funded entirely with fees for cable TV. And if we're taking $20,000 out of this budget, you're going to put that money into general fund?
So, no.
So, yeah, we need to discuss if we take 20,000 out because that money can only be spent in certain ways.
Right, so just bear with me one moment. So in general, approximately, and this number has been going down for the PATV, but you are correct that the cable TV fees have been coming in somewhere between $85,000 and $95,000 a year for the last several years, at least that I'm familiar with it. I'm trying to pull up their final budget. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very, come on. So now I'm going to try and be tricky and change my screen share.
Those monies are part of the franchise fee that they pay cable pays.
There we go.
And it's specifically the fund, PEG TV, so I'm not sure how we can remove funds.
I'll show your board in a moment, 2021. Okay, great. All right, so what you're seeing here, and let me make this a little bit larger. Can you all see that? The numbers, or would you like it larger?
A little bit larger, please.
Okay. Okey-dokey. All right, so what we see here is, are the fees that Supervisor Toffenelli is referring to. So these are coming in. You can see that we've budgeted 90,000, but each of the last two years, those revenues have come in a little bit late. The recommendation of my office will be to actually reduce that $90,000 figure when we get to recommended budget. So there are some other minor fees and whatnot. But here, this line 4720, these are the historical general fund contributions that have been made to the PATV budget. So while it's true that those fees should remain within the budget, the general fund on the whole is making quite a contribution. What happened this year was that these funds simply did not get reduced when the cut was... Actually, that wasn't the 5% cut. But regardless, this is an additional general fund contribution that looks like it's fund balance, but it's actually just general fund monies. It's an error to be corrected, is what it is. So, but it's understood that just to remove the $12,000, but the idea was to clean up this error is why we had budgeted that.
All right. So that's more clear.
Additional costs to the general fund that you are chiming in?
It's less of a reimbursement, I guess, is how I would put it.
Mr. Garimendi?
So just so, in rough orders of magnitude, for every $1 we get from these franchise fees for PATV, we put up $2 of general fund dollars, roughly.
Between $1.50 and, yeah.
Right. So it's not as if PATV floats on its own bottom.
That is...
We subsidize it heavily, so that 20,000...
That is correct.
Correct.
Good points. Ms. Callaway?
That's the request that Mr. Lark's been asking for for some time. And since we were doing the sweep, which we really didn't have to do, it could have stayed in their budget, he could do the project. Since the sweep, since it is in there, I'm requesting that he be allowed to replace the LED light panels. I talked to Patrick Martin about it. He said that he's there constantly, re-changing every time a bulb goes out, changing the bulbs. And going to this would reduce that and reduce the heat factor. All of us have been in the studio and know how hot those lights get when going to LEDs. So either we do it now and let him do it now, or it'll come up again at budget. And I think they don't normally ask for much, like Facilities doesn't ask for much, or Ag doesn't ask for much. That we should allow them. And that's based on an estimate that Mr. Lark gave. So I request on behalf of Community TV that we allow them to have the $12,000.
Mr. Garimendi?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chair. My position is still the same.
We discussed the 12,000 just now, and we're...
And I'm not in support of retaining that. I actually, I'm taking a completely different tact. I think we ought to talk about $200,000 we spend a year on PATV. Is that a good investment? But that's not part of this conversation, so yeah.
I think that's a fiscal budget.
I agree. It's another day.
It's another day.
But on this one, no, I haven't changed my position.
So you're done. Mr. Toffenelli?
Are we talking 12,000 or 20,000 right now? What do we...
Well, the entire amount on the line item is 20, but I...
I want to keep 12.
The request by Ms. Callaway is 12.
I thought her, I heard her say that she was going to... Okay, I'm in favor of 12,000.
So we're back to three, seven at this point. Ms. Fuldorff?
Does 20 will be dropped down to 12?
It'll be dropped down to 8,000 as they're requesting 12 to be retained to be able to pay for the new lights of public access TV for a capital investment. And please turn on your mic, I apologize.
Okay. But I do agree with Jack that they need to provide a agreement that they need to be a bigger conversation about that.
At this point, okay, sorry, I apologize.
No, no, yeah. Yeah, yes. But with the caveat that we need to have a further conversation.
So you're a yes to the $12,000 going into the lights with the caveat that the conversation about public access TV needs to be a huge part of the fiscal budget discussion in June?
Correct.
Understood. So we have four for that one, Ms. Callaway. So we're clear on the public access TV. We're clear on the sheriff's budget. Is there any other questions by any board members? Or do you need anything to be cleared up for you at all, Ms. Von Latta?
So I'll just recap where I think we're at here, which is, as you just indicated, $12,000 to be moved into the capitalized capital assets line in PATV and a reduction in the sweep down to 8,000 and change. We will unwind 100% of the budget of TOT revenues and related transfers that were presented. Attachment D is approved in its entirety. And as it relates to the positions that have been requested by the sheriff's department that would come back on, sorry, the ninth, one week from today, all of those are being approved as requested at this time, as well as the capital assets on attachment C and the ratification of the board's prior action on attachment E. Is that consistent with the board's?
Ms. Callaway, you have your light on. Is there anything? Okay. That's my full understanding, unless there's any disagreement from any board member. I will entertain Ms. Simpson's public comment.
I do not see any public comments at this time.
We'll give it a few seconds more for delay. And at that point, I'll entertain a motion from the board. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
A second by Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes on a 401 vote of the board. That concludes our regular session. We will be going to close session at this time. Thank you.